Little bit of a chair.
Chair.
Yeah.
Terms to advance.
Nobody else.
You've advanced very fast.
Last man standing.
Alternative ultimate to vice chair.
Right?
Meteoric lines.
I know.
Still curious.
Okay, we'll open the agenda for the planning board meeting of June 2020. I'll begin with Joel Carl.
Here.
Justin Talia was not here.
Uncle.
Here.
Jamie Pennington is not going to be here. Detective Rogers.
Here.
Karen Malasano.
Here.
And Bluestein is expected to be here. And Katrina is here. We have. We have five of us here. For the first agenda. So, you prefer the general items of public hearing or casual brothers realty? Twenty-two Henry Graff Road. It's special for.
Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It's great to be here. Lisa Mead, me tell them in class thirty-three street, your report on behalf of the Castle Brothers Realty LLC and Coach Club LLC. And with me are Castle Brothers, as well as Ricardo Patutti, who is the owner of Coach Club LLC. This is a property at twenty-two Henry Graff Road. You can go to the next slide. This is a request for special permit for indoor health and recreation facility. There are currently three units at twenty-two Henry Graff Road. Currently, one includes Vanguard key. Vanguard Key Club. The other includes Fuel. And there's proposed Coach Club to go into the Mill seventy-seven space, which is a retail trade space. You'd be interested to know that Vanguard Key Club is there with a variance that existed since around two thousand seventeen, I think. The Fuel is there as an educational facility by right, also long time standing. These were both in there before the Castle was purchased the property. And Mill seventy-seven was allowed as a retail by variance also in the property. So, we were originally coming in frankly for the Coach Club under the new recreational use. However, at the urging of the zoning enforcement officer, she suggested that we might just repurpose the whole building and get special permits for everything, which made sense frankly, particularly for Vanguard, which is there under a variance and had a very dangerous parking requirement, kind of crazy parking requirement frankly. And so, we agreed that it would make more sense to have everybody there under the existing, the new four oh six use of health and recreation, indoor recreation. So that's why we're actually here for all three uses, even though Vanguard currently exists as does Fuel. And so, the only new use in that site would be the new Coach Club use.
Just to clarify, so are you asking, is it one special permit for the entire building? Where the three uses or is it multiple special permits?
I agree.
I think that's fine.
Which is simple.
Yeah, it's simpler. I think that that's fine. With one special permit, we cover the entire building. I mean, we need all the requirements, so not particularly concerned.
Thank you.
So, and frankly, that would be good if later on one of the uses switched out to another indoor recreational facility came in with no additional issues. So, the, here's the site plan. And Graff Road is to your right. And many of you see that initial parking at the top of the building there when you pull in. But what you don't really see is all the parking in back that exists because it's really hard to see from Graff Road. So you can see there's a hundred and one parking spaces, I think, on the whole site. We need half of those to satisfy the requirements of the use four oh six. So that's the existing site. Next slide please. So, in the, on the building itself, you have unit one, which is Vanguard, which is that really dark colored one right up front. Unit two, right behind that, behind it, it's kind of weird. Unit two, right there, yes, sorry. That's the new Coach Club space, which was retail seventy-seven. And Mill seventy-seven, excuse me, and unit three behind is where Fuel is right now. Uh, next thing. Next. So, as I said before, unit two is going to be a Coach Club. It's indoor golf that offers leagues, tournaments, member events, extended coaching programs. They have a program up in Hampton right now. They offer this up in Hampton, so they won't offer one right down here. They offer the Trackman Golf Simulators with over a hundred and eighty golf courses and approximate four hundred and thirty-two square feet of putting green. So, I don't know if any of you watch golf. I'm a big golf fan. So, but if you watch golf and you see, when you're watching the tournaments, you see the tracking thing that follows the ball. So that's what this is. And if any of you have been up to the Newbury Golf Center, they actually have those at each one of those little stanchions. I don't know what they're properly called. So, and each one of those, they have those. And so, they're going to have those here. It's pretty cool. You can put them on an app and you can track your, your progress or lack of progress if you're me. And so it's part of the whole situation. The finished space will also offer each golf simulator and a lounge area. Notably, the applicant who hasn't won a number of awards and recognitions and certifications of the twenty twenty-two New England PGA Teacher of the Year will offer lessons as well and coaching to members and non-members alike. Therefore, it meets the definition of the indoor recreation and health and recreation use. The second is Vanguard's twenty-four hour gym. It currently operates under the use variance, as I indicated. It's a gym and you have to be a member of it and it operates inside. Therefore, it meets the health and recreation indoor use. And third is Fuel Fitness, which offers classes in fitness and exercise classes, training. And it too meets the use requirements of the section four oh six definition. It's interesting to know that a number of communities are adding what we would call often is being used as experiential uses in addition to the indoor and recreational use. So you're kind of on the cutting edge having adopted this to allow these kinds of uses in these areas. The parking requirements, let me go to the next page. Oh, so let me just show you. So this is the, the indoor, these are the plans for the area of the Coach Club. And you can see the simulator is kind of at the top with the seating behind. There's the putting green in the middle. You've got the bathroom facilities on the right-hand side. Next slide please. And this is just a blank square footage of the same area. And the next two slides are the same, Andy, so you can go to the next one. There we go. Let me just also add that as far as the parking is concerned, the requirements for parking for Coach Club is eleven spaces. That's because it's based upon a thousand, one space per thousand square feet of court area or other game play areas. So that's eleven spaces for Coach Club. Vanguard is required to have twenty-seven spaces. And Fuel is required to have thirteen spaces. So that, the total requirement is fifty-one spaces. And as I said, there is actually a hundred and two spaces provided on site. So, all of the businesses meet the four oh six definition. All dimensional requirements are met for the property and all parking requirements are met for the property. If you go to the next slide please. And one to go one. So the next part of the special permit is of course to meet the general special permit requirements under ten H seven. And I'll just run through those. The first is that the use is listed in the table of use regulations. And of course, as you know, you've amended that at the end of last year to add a by special permit. The next is that the use is essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare. Here, since this was just added, the city recognizes the desirability of indoor health and recreation facilities. Moreover, as you know, that has been broke out of COVID. People have desired to see more local health recreation possibilities, including indoor recreation possibilities. Vanguard is a convenient twenty-four hour gym at low cost to its membership. Fuel provides another alternative of group fitness classes, workout sessions. They all boost the customer's health. Including Coach Club offers a modern space for focusing on golf skills. A very popular and growing recreation activity, athletic activity, training and practice, as well as space to socialize around the golf offering, a convenient recreational facility. And so, these all meet the requirement for being desirable for public convenience and welfare. The third criteria is that requested use will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. Here, you've had a retail facility Vanguard and Fuel operating for at least seven years, if not longer. And there's not any issues with traffic there. I think it's interesting, even with the addition of the Coach Club, if any of you are familiar with the, I'm going to say it again, the new competitor of the street, that the way people go in and out of the Newbury Golf Center, for example, it's, it's very segmented, right? There's not this big line that goes in and out. As you go up, you, you know, you hit a bucket of balls and you leave and everybody does it at different times. So you never really recognize that there's a problem, any problems with traffic. So certainly by adding this and making these all that exist on under four oh six uses, there won't be any issues with traffic congestion. Uh, next place. It's the, the question use will not overload public water drainage or sewer system or any other maintenance services here. There's no change to the building. There's no change to the parking lot. We have, there's no change to Vanguard that exists. There's no change to Fuel that exists. And then we have the bathrooms that are added in the Coach Facility, but it's not, they're not walkrooms, they're uh, the fifth requirement is that there, are there any special regulations for the use? And the answer is no, there are no special regulations. The sixth is that the, the use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. And here, it certainly won't. In fact, the city has made a conscious effort to allow indoor recreation and health facilities in this area. These are all indoors too. So the building still appears to be, you know, appropriate for the industrial park. That's not changing at all. And so therefore, there, you know, there won't be any detriment and it won't impair the integrity or character of the district. Seventh is that requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that use. Here, primarily around here, there are industrial uses. You've allowed the pickleball use down at the Newbury Brewing Company, which is not immediately adjacent. And of course, you have the rock climbing facility over by River Walk Brewing, but that of course is not adjacent either. And that's there by variance. So there won't be an excess of the use in the neighborhood. The eighth is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And of course, the ordinance specifically allows this use. It was purposeful. The purpose will change last year. And so, it's certainly in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And the last item is that the purpose, the proposed use will not be conducted in a manner that will admit any dangerous, nauseous, or injurious, or otherwise objectionable impacts on the area. And of course, that won't be the case. There's no changes. It's all going to be indoors and there won't be any adverse impacts. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we've asked the board grant a special permit for indoor recreational use for the structure actively to Graff.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Is there any food service?
Uh, there will be snacks available, like, you know, prepackaged snacks. And they are, they may be applying for a beer in my, similar to, I mean, Riverwalk Inn.
I move to approve the special permit.
Excuse me. I think we have to ask for public comment. But I don't want to be turned up by that inadvertently.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to this application. And you've got no closing public comment and public hearing.
And with that, I'll move to approve the special permit for twenty-two Graff. I'll say.
We do not have anybody online, so. So we can do it by, is all those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
And we are just about. Okay, next item is an informal discussion, but I did not have the ninety-seven.
No.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, just for the record, Lisa Mead, me tell them in class thirty-three Green Street. And with me is Scott Brown. He is the architect on the project. And Hugh.
Hugh Collins.
Collins, who is the landscape architect on the project. And then John Rock, who is the owner and principal of the LLC, which owns the property. So this is unusual. We don't usually do informal meetings or hearings, if you will, with the planning board. But this is a really important project. And as you know, we were here during the zoning change. And the ZDA is going to get this. And they're not used to this kind of project necessarily succeed, right? And it's not really succeed, obviously, but they, they do do special permits, obviously. But this, this is a pretty high profile project. And we wanted to get the planning board's input on this to go to the ZDA with and to see if there was any changes that, you know, we thought we should make before we went on to them. We have filed with the ZDA, but we're not until the July ninth meeting. So we would be able to make any modifications if necessary. This has been in the works for a long time. And importantly, Scott and John and John's assistant David have met extensively with the neighbors on this process and developing the design for the project. And I'll let Scott tell you about all the iterations that went through. Eventually, as they moved through the project, I started meeting with them as well. We then worked with the city and did a development agreement on the general configuration of the footprint and what would go here. And then obviously, that resulted in a zoning change. And so here we are today, Scott and Hugh having put pen to paper and developed developed plans. So the proposed building is two structures. There's three units in one structure and one unit in the other. So therefore, it meets the new definition of multifamily use in the R three district. The property meets all of the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. It's twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven square feet of area, a hundred and ninety-five plus frontage. The building height is twenty-seven point nine feet. Coverage is twenty-nine percent. We're allowed to go to forty. Open space is thirty-nine percent, which is forty. We use the established front yard setback while we work with the neighbors to be able to pull the building closer to the street and away from the adjacent residential structures in the back and side. One side setback is ten and a half, where ten is the requirement. And the rear setback is twenty-two point six. You have to also remember that the front yard in this project is actually State Street because it's the longest front. So the, the rear is opposite that. And then you've got the, the side is on the right side of State Street. Uh, next. So here is the existing conditions. And you can see the site, it's by and large covered with pottop except for that back berm in the back, if you will. And I think Stephanie would tell you that's what's left of the bridge. It was cut out in the middle. And, you know, that, that's it. And we all know what it looks like. And I'll show you just to make sure you know. And here is from the opposite corner on State and High Street. And the next one is off High Street. So, and this is a good one to look at. Just hang on for a second, Andy, if you don't mind. So, if you look at the rear of this site, which is the side yard, you see that mound goes up in the back. So that is kind of the leftover evidence of what was cut out up there to put the gas station there. What you're going to see in the design in a little bit, Scott's going to show you is that house that's on State Street right there, the adjacent property is built into that. Is built into that, that mound. And our proposed structure, the single family carriage house, is also built into that mound, which will match the, the property next. Next. Uh, one of the things that we did, and I'm going to hand it off to Scott here in a second, is when we were developing this, and we also, I meant, my, we met with Andy and Jennifer and everybody at Two Times as well. Is we really wanted to see what the buildings around it, what the, you know, the facade, the length of the frontage was, the mast thing, to make sure that what was being proposed was in keeping with all of the things around it as well. And I'll let Scott go over that. But as you can see, neither one of our, if either the facing front, the elevation on north of High Street and the elevation on State Street are actually shorter than the elevations of the properties on opposite corners. And that was purposeful and driven by design and actually a lot of conversation with the neighbors in the city. Uh, so with that, because I didn't design what I think is actually a really beautiful project, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to pick it up from here.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Scott Brown, the architect of the project. And very happy to be here tonight. Have the opportunity to finally unveil this, this project to the public because it is something that we have been working diligently on for, for quite a, quite a long time. And we've been very careful about how we've put this together. And what you're seeing tonight is really the product of input, many individuals, hard work of many individuals. And I believe without the input of those individuals, it's possible that we might have something different. So this has been a very important project to me personally. I think it's a very important project to the city of Newport. I think it's important that we get this right. And I do believe that with the exception of some minor details, some minor nuances, I do think we have it right. And, and as well on its way to being in the next project. So what we're seeing up here on the screen is Lisa already mentioned. This is a graphic that we put together back, you know, last October. This is an update to that graphic. And we put it together in order to sort of really compare this project to some of the surrounding properties. There's a lot of information on this. One of the things that Lisa mentioned is sort of the length of facade of this, this thing that we're proposing. And it's, and how it compares to sort of a project, the building immediately across from High Street and also what is the former Knights of Columbus at the front of Pond and State. And the actual facade length that we're proposing is less than both structures. The other data we have on this, we have footprint sizes and, uh, which is helpful to sort of compare this to, to the other structures. One of the things that has changed in this since October is this is actually got smaller. So the principal, uh, primary building that we're proposing is about four hundred feet smaller than what we were proposing in October. The standalone, uh, single unit carriage house in the back, that's virtually the same as what we were proposing in October, but its footprint has, has changed slightly. Uh, in terms of the height of the structure, it is the same as it was back in October. The data we have on this plan, this plan is relative to sea level. You know, so the height of this structure is elevation ninety-nine. And as you can see, you know, from other, you know, some of the abutting structures, it is sort of right in, in the neighborhood being comparable to some of the other properties. In fact, it is about seven feet less in height than the former Knights of Columbus building. And, and it is actually not nearly as tall as the building immediately cross on High Street, which is actually the tallest, which is a gambrel and actually the tallest, you know, tallest structure in the neighborhood. The other data we have on here, what I just mentioned, is sort of the footprint sizes. And so our proposal includes, you know, two car garages within the footprint. I think it's really the only building in the immediate neighborhood. I can't think of another. Maybe there's one other, one oh four, one oh eight Street, Street, which has garages within the footprints that are shown. So our size there includes those garages. So it's a little hard to compare that size to some of the other structures. So one of the things that I've done is extracted the square footage of that garage. And, and we're about like, you know, thirty-two hundred and seventy-five square feet. And just comparing that to the Knights of Columbus building, which is also, you know, a three family, that's roughly thirty-five square feet. You know, so our living space is actually less than the building, building across the street. Will we go to the next slide, please, Andy? So we have a number of photos of just of the neighborhood because it's helpful to kind of understand, you know, the context. We can just sort of go through these really quickly. These are some abutting, you know, some other properties crossed the way on High Street. Some brick brackets. One fourteen High Street is directly across the street, the opposite corner. This is, uh, you know, we're proposing a mansard roof. You know, so this is also a mansard roof. A little bit more fancy than what we're proposing. Lovely house. That's the side view of that house. And there's the structure immediately plus that, you know, on State Street. You know, one oh five Street, Street is a brick federal immediately opposite of that. And one twelve High Street, this is the side view of this from State. You know, and I believe this to be the sort of the tallest structure to the peak, you know, in the neighborhood. Very, very lovely house. Of course, next side, this is a, you know, sort of a two family. That's the front view of that High Street. Quite a big tie. Four unit multifamily immediately to the right. That's sprawl in footprint. Can't remember how many units this is, but this is multifamily just to the right of that. And these are the abutting properties on High Street that are on the same side as our project. And this is the immediate Butters House, Stephanie and Novak Niketich. Very, very lovely house. And this is where you can actually start to see, it's a house that sort of sits high up on the ridge. And you can begin to see some of the challenges that, you know, we've had putting this, this project together. There's some extreme grades on the site. Next slide. So we have one twenty-three State Street. And, and this is, uh, you know, probably three or four parcels from our property. And this is on here because this is a very similar group style we're proposing, you know, for our carriage house. It's a two-story structure where the mansard is at the second floor level. So this is nearly, uh, this is a very, very good comp we're proposing for our carriage house, which is the standalone unit. And again, you know, another house with up on State Street, you know, same kind of group style. You know, one Pond Street, former Knights of Columbus. Pretty high building that sits pretty high on the site. And so what we're going to see in the next few photos are some of the structures along High Street. And they all sit up really high relative to the side. Which is not unlike what we're proposing to do with ours. And they're all dealing with some of the same grade challenge. So, you know, these first floor levels are probably eight to nine feet above the sidewalk, which is very, very similar. And again, a matrix, again, you know, we've got, you know, a primary structure that has three units in, in it and a standalone structure, which has one unit, which we call the carriage house. We have a zoning matrix here. And as Lisa sort of already mentioned, we'll be meeting all the dimensional requirements for this, this property. Next slide please. So the plan for Millennium Engineering, our civil engineer on the project. So the plan for Millennium Engineering, our civil engineer on the project. You know, I mentioned that we've got some, you know, extreme grade challenges from that, so from that front left corner to the back right corner of this site, there's 17 feet of elevation change. And so we've had really challenging time trying to make this work, and as a result, we have a number number of retaining walls, you know, on the property. And all of those retaining walls on the left side, as you face it from High Street, are necessary in order to, to, you know, execute this project. That carriage house building is actually dug into the hill, so the backside of that first floor there is actually, you know, acting as like retaining, you know, retaining wall. For the most part, all of the retaining walls that we have up front, you know, on the State and High Street sides, you know, they're really there for aesthetic reasons, and I think it's a very elegant way of, you know, addressing, you know, kind of the extreme elevation changes that we cite. Next slide, please. Another plan for Millennium, this is a utility plan. Planned to bring all of the utilities off of the State Street side and, and you know, bring them up our parking court and branch it off into the, into the units. Next slide, please. So the money show, so this is, you know, our rendering, you know, taken from the intersection of High and State, and you know, we've done our best to make this sort of as accurate as possible, as possible, but that is a very difficult thing to do. What I can say here is the building is rendered accurately, so sort of the size and scale and detail of this is exactly what we're planning to propose. The landscaping, however, is sort of another, another matter, it's very, very hard to get that right, while the placement of these trees does sort of match what Hugh was showing in his plan, we've kind of altered some things, so we can actually sort of see some of the, you know, some of the architecture. One of the things in this rendering that is not entirely accurate is basically the height of the retaining wall. We had a hard time getting that. It looks like retaining walls about five feet tall, so you can ascertain the people on sidewalk. It's called, oh, it's tall. Next slide, please. And again, like color here is merely the representation, we haven't ended like, you know, what color we're having to use here. So this is the rendering, you know, from State Street. You can see a door right there, front center. This is what's going to be the main entrance for our unit that is on the corner high in State, back off right there, that's, that's Carriage House, which is sort of standalone unit. You know, two stories with a second floor is underneath the mansard roof. Again, try to do our best to kind of accurately represent, you know, what Hugh was showing in his landscape plans, but that was kind of difficult to do. And our, our two-dimensional drawings of the elevations, not quite as exciting as the renderings, but you know, the drawing on the bottom there, that's our view from High Street. You know, off to the left, that is going to be the primary entrance for High Street for our unit. At the end, we've got a door in the middle, that's another primary entrance for a middle, kind of like a landlocked unit. That unit in the middle will have some, you'll see in a minute, in Hugh's plans, will have some outdoor space in front of that on High Street side. And we've got a wraparound porch here, which is dedicated to that, that unit there on the corner, and of course, you know, we've got kind of an angled windowway there, which, you know, is a little bit of a feature that's facing, you know, kind of the, the intersection. The elevation on the top is, as you would see this from, from State Street, we've got a door there, this is intended to be the primary entrance for that sort of premium corner unit. And off to the right there, and that right-hand corner, you know, that's the massing for our two-car garage, so that window there on the first floor always behind that, and it was actually the two-car garage for this particular unit. Next slide. Up on the top, this is the view of the back of this from the parking court. You know, we've got some arched openings there, which form a little niche, and those are actually sort of doors to the, within that niche are doors to the garage spaces. And immediately on the second floor there, see a roof terrace, which is sort of bracketed by, you know, a second floor structure on either side to kind of create a little bit of privacy there. So the challenge we have with this sort of middle unit is it really creates falling outdoor space. So this is our solution, you know, to create sort of a very private, you know, second floor terrace space for them. And immediately above that, you'll see some, you know, curious fence-like enclosures, you know, at the roof level. And this is where we're intending to put, you know, all of our outdoor mechanics. There is really no place to, you know, put it on the site, at the ground floor. And drawing at the bottom, this is how you would see the building upside. Now, this is the side that faces the abutting property, you know, owned by Stephanie and Novak. We've got an entrance there in the middle, which is really a secondary entrance into the structure, and that also leads to sort of a, you know, kind of a space there that's sort of like embedded into the hill. Then of course, off to the left there, you know, that's the massing for garages, which do have living space. This is our carriage house, you know, on the bottom, as, as you would see it from State Street. You know, these folks will also have a, an outdoor area at grade level. You know, we've have, immediately in front of this, we have a plan for kind of retain wall and a heavy landscaping screen, so so I don't think at the end of the day, you're really going to see the building like, you know, like this, because it's intended to be somewhat private. And on top, that's the view from the parking board, off to the left there, so you know, two-car, two-car garage, and the main entrance for the unit there, you can see some calls with a little cover. You know, cup entry, entry way, which is tucked in the corner there. Next slide, please. And these may look a little odd, but this is a building that's actually buried, you know, buried into the hill, which is why these two elevations look very, you know, very odd. Now, on the bottom, you know, this is that, you know, as you would view the structure from the immediate abutting property at, I think it's 109, Marge and Peters property at 109 State Street, again, embedded into the hill. And drawing at the top, this is a design where it has all the living space at the ground floor level, that was at the second floor level. Create a little bit private, you know, outdoor patio area tucked in the way back corner of the site, and this is the door leading to the, you know, find that door, there's either next slide, please. This is a graphic that we, you know, you know, we've included, because I think early on, there's questions about, you know, you know, how we were changing grade, how much we were changing the grade, and and so this is, you know, shows our structures, you know, relative to the proposed grade, I mean, existing grade, which is certain, you know, blue line there. And really what we've tried to do is sort of like split the difference between, you know, elevating the site a little bit. And we've elevated the site to, to do for two reasons, one, we needed to create some, you know, positive drainage in the parking. And also, we wanted to kind of take the sting out of the retaining walls in the back, so we elevated it a little bit, but you know, not, not too much for those two reasons. Next slide, please. And just to look at, you know, kind of what we were, you know, planning to use materials here. We're planning to use sort of a synthetic slate new shingle, which we've used successfully a couple of times, you know, here in Newport. Most recently at our new project at the bottom of Market Street, 26 Market Street. You know, that has a synthetic slate new shingle. Planning to use the same product here as well, using a mixture of different, you know, rot-resistant materials. You know, there's a lot of different products up there these days, like this new product in the bottom right called Acre, which is environmentally friendly and made with ice husks, you know, cuts well, holds paint well. And, but there's a right, right place to use it and a wrong place for that, so we're mixing and matching, you know, in terms of using rot-resistant materials everywhere. We're planning to have some copper roofs, you know, shiplapped siding, channel bevel product. And yeah, so right now, planning to use sort of a high-quality aluminum clad wood window, mostly double-hungers, traditional double-hungers. But also hoping to maybe convince my clients that we should be using wood simply because wood windows have taken care of property there. Hopefully. And next slide, please. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to to Hugh here, which will kind of walk you guys through what we're planning to do with the landscaping.
I'm not sure who's in charge of
Andy right there, Andy's in charge.
Here's the guy. So here's the overall site plan, what we've tried to do is create green space totally surrounding the structures. So from whatever angle you're looking in, into the building project, we're creating green. You probably noticed in some of the photographs that Scott prepared, showed you earlier, some of the structures that he showed had no trees. And the buildings looked like they're jumping up into the sky. In order to bring that visual image down, you have to plant trees around it. That's what we've done here. So surrounding the structure of High Street and State Street, we're proposing mixture of flowering trees and maybe incorporating some shade trees in that whole, that whole region. The entrances to the garages, you can see, we tried to keep the pavement area to a minimum and have just a single entrance into the property. At one time, we were considering a double entrance, one from High Street, one from State Street. That took up all landscape space, landscape designers didn't like that. So we have a single entrance, good functionality, getting in and out of garages, the garage, plenty of room to enter the property and depart from the property, even with two cars coming in. Do we have formal entrance at the State Street entrance, by formal, I mean, a couple of stone pillars flanked by stone walls and enhanced with, with lanterns. Let's see, there's a circulation pattern, a pedestrian pattern, the owners of the units, so they can get around and have outdoor living spaces as well, each unit has its own outdoor patio. Tried to make it as private as, as possible. You can see off the two doors there on the top, there are steps leading down to a small patio. This illustrates some of the retaining walls that Scott was talking about, you can see where even this structure, not only the carriage house, but this main structure set down at a lower plane than the grade between the building and Stephanie and Novak's house, which is in that whole zone, be planted up in that region for privacy, so we're, we're trying to create privacy screening surrounding the whole perimeter to be as little impact as possible to the others. Landscape lighting. I think there's another slide. Yeah, so all those little dots you see there represent lights. And although it looks like a lot, it's really just some enhancement lighting, showing some of the facade of the walls, the buildings, walkway lights, which would be little mushroom lights. So people on foot can get around the building safely. And lights that are built into the masonry to light up steps, getting from one elevation to another. And there'll be a couple of post lanterns, maybe three or four post lanterns, it would not be unlike the ones you see down town, and I don't know what the name of that cage is. Where there's a pond. Yeah. There are post lanterns there, and I'm visioning one per unit of that, that style. I haven't had a photograph of it, but something very much in keeping with Newport, what you might see here. Always very concerned about flooding, too much light. All of the lighting would be low-profile and nothing in your face, nothing shooting up into the sky. Just some enhancement lighting and functional. That's a little sketch that I prepared early on. And you can see, I think, especially the bottom one, we have some trees. You can see how that has a tendency to draw the structure into the ground. Rather than just having building emerging. And entrance, you can see the car in between the two buildings. It'll be low-profile entrance, a couple of stone pillars, maybe enhanced with some lighting. Not sure if we're going to be doing any kind of signage, saying just street numbers on that. I think that's about it. Maybe see what we have for another different dimension. Okay, submission, Andy?
Just a point.
I think that's it, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Just finish out.
Yeah.
The stairs to the left there, the old plan or the new? So you're entering from the High Street?
That, that's current plan, and it gets you up to two of the residences, two of those units.
So I just wanted to say a couple I have to say in the beginning, first, there are no basements in these units, prohibited from having basements, so that you should know that. As Scott and Hugh pointed out, there is only one egress for vehicles, and that's on State Street. We have an agreement with the city not to go on High Street, so and with that, we'd love to hear, love to hear your comments, suggestions, and you know, whatever, what you think. You know? And we can answer any questions.
No, just, just one, one question, I, I see that you, you did a calculation for the frontage setback and so forth.
Yes.
So you used the, the two adjacents on either side, I didn't check the math, but that you did that math and it came up
So it's 14.9, it's actually 14.9, but we're, it's 14.4, but we're 14.9, right, it's more further.
So that is, that is how the calculation came.
Yeah, I would have to double-check with the engineer on that, but yeah, Jennifer, Jennifer approved it, so.
Okay, so I'm going to give, yeah, Jennifer.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, 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 we had to do a plus for determination like we always do, so she checked it. I mean, frankly, you know, if the neighbors could have us move it forward more towards State Street, they would have, but we can't, I mean, probably Susan, we can't.
So just maybe I think you alluded to drainage, I'm just curious if you have to address with the neighbors, and it sounds like perhaps there's a dress with the landscaping, I would imagine that's going to be an important consideration and question.
And we are actually having a stormwater peer review done, so with the, with the zoning board. Well, they haven't got the stormwater letter yet, but they will have, they have our existing conditions plans, which we have on here, the existing condition plans, the existing topography as well, so you'll see the front of the driveway, see that kind of front of the driveway, see that kind of, that right there, that's a drainage, that's drainage, right? So there's all sheet blow into that, but that's, those are all pervious papers, right? So everything's taken care of on site. Um, we did, um, Hugh and Scott and the engineers are, um, paying particular attention to, and if you go up to the the northeast corner. Um, so we are paying particular attention to, um, the line along Stephanie and Novak's property there. And what happens and how that's impacted. So that's all addressed in the, um, in the report. We've, we've taken great care not to cut into the ridge, right? So the landscaping up there is gonna change to, you know, frankly, it's, I think it's a mess on, on this property, right? So it's gonna change, but you know, I think if you ask our clients and Hugh right now, they would like to just cut two or three feet off and that would be great, right? But we're making every effort not to do that. So um, we've maybe, we're taking great pains, particularly in that area to watch what happens.
Right.
Right. And that's all, that will be, be reviewed by.
So I think you answered the question I had.
Right, pervious, it's all pervious.
Yeah, and, um, you know, at least I mentioned the stormwater sort of report is, is in progress. We have really actually sort of well, draining soils. Um, so we think we're gonna be able to bring all of the roof runoff and, uh, all of the runoff to this sort of, you know, pervious.
Yes.
permeable, it's a must. And we think we can bring it all to the driveway. Solve all issues.
Just, I wonder if you could put up the, uh, couple of the last landscape, along the elevation along. Could, could you talk a little bit more about the height of the wall? Around the, the site on, on both High Street and State Street. It looks like from the top drawing that the green edge, which is outside of the, most of the, the street. It's also has a significant slope to it. So could, could you walk us through that in a little bit more detail?
Yeah, it's, it's not a significant slope. Two foot grade differential between sidewalk and base. On the High Street side, the interstate. Stone wall is known, uh, it's gonna be less than five. Um, and the grade differential between the sidewalk and top of that somewhere around six feet, so. It's just a little green grass, uh, space that's gonna or get, give visibility for people coming into that intersection, so they can look and then through without obstruction. And it'll be all low profile, I don't know, just, just long. But the slope is, uh.
I think it's, I mean, if I'm reading the drawings correctly, you've broken the elevation difference between sidewalk and ground floor elevation into three pieces. One is that sloping green area. One is the stone wall and then elevation, there's a transition up and into the ground floor. I think it's the right idea. And I think what you just said, um, you know, perhaps your ability to kind of see across that though, you know, sidewalk. I think that's really important.
I do too.
And if it's six feet, I'm not sure that's, that's the reality of it.
Uh, the walls are set back off that corner quite a lot. We go back to the site plan, we can see. So if you go to the corner, the intersection of High Street and State, and you come off of that rounded end of that stone wall there. That's a, that's a lot of, a lot of space.
So you can see through that zone, but can't see at, at the top elevation.
At the top elevation.
Well, should we take a look at the rendition? Maybe that I'd like to see the two.
Yeah, it's, it's, I know, the idea is there.
Yeah, sidewalk slope and then, um, getting on.
I think the other, go to the lower elevation on this drawing and go to the right, the right hand side of it. There you go. That's the corner of State and High, from High Street.
So the visibility around that corner would be should be excellent.
Is there any potential for seating or anything at that corner's seating? I think there is enough.
If you go to the, um, site lighting plan. Here, and zoom in on the driveway a little bit. So, uh, it's not so much the lighting picking up here, although I do see it, it looks like the couple of lighting picture outside. But what I'm more concerned about, looking at this, looking at the elevation from the State Street side is the placement of those pillars, um, at the driveway entrance. And I'm working particularly because the one on the left is really not function, it's not functional stacked, you know, because the wall just stands there. Pull those pillars back a little bit from the property line to get better sight lines for vehicles exiting the driveway. And I think, I mean, on the left side, it's easy, just take that little stub of the wall and push it back. On the right side, it might be, you know, angling that, you wanna keep the private space for the carriage.
We do, but I think we could.
Yeah, I think that would be my one recommendation there is to, is to pull those back from the street, uh, so that you don't interfere with the sight lines, even though they're, even though when you look at the elevation, the car windows look like they're above that. But still, any little impediment to vision, I think, if this, if somebody will kid walking down. And the wall on the, the, um, the back side is approximately, it looks like it's about seventy, is that about right?
Yes.
The, uh, the.
The rounded part.
Other side going, going to the left.
Going to the left.
And it looks like sixty seven, seventy four, it's about to change.
It steps down, uh, you see what the railing is on top of the wall, the radius.
Yep.
The wall.
Yep.
And then it extends to the left, a couple of seg- segments.
Yep.
At that point, the wall steps down like twelve or eighteen inches.
Okay.
It goes a little bit further and steps down again. It's just a series of steps that goes all the way across till you get to about a three foot high wall again.
And is the function of that rake to get, get into work on landscaping in there or is it drainage or?
Uh, it's just unnecessary. You don't need, it's not retained.
So disappears into the.
Yeah, just comes into patio grid. The building. So we've tried to preserve that whole, that whole stretch of. Minimal to no, no grading.
And it looks like the, um, the end of the parking area is about sixty seven, all walkway and patio. You have to come up the stairs from High Street.
The idea to build a level platform that the building's onto. Yeah. We skip over to the next, um, one of the next plans. There's a specific planting plan for that, that area. You can see that upper area there, we're trying to create a vegetated. Visual barrier between properties. Uh, and then preservation of that flow, um, gets the plantings up that much higher, so making more, more concealment. But I believe basically a total evergreen expanse there. Being the side of the project buildings, uh, the ornamental plantings, the salius root differences.
So those, those plantings on that level are really starting most at the second floor.
It'd be about four feet up, I think it's about seventy two.
Okay.
And the grade around the building is sixty seven. Or five, you know?
I missed what the setting material was again. It's a, uh, polyester product. It's a channel. Shimmer. This is one bit. Polyester, it's recycled coal ash. Yeah, boom, it's a pretty good, sturdy good product. We use it a lot.
The grain, it's got a natural grain to it. It's, um, we actually used it, I've used it, it's.
Yeah.
We painted it and it's nice.
Just, uh, one, one technical question and then one comment of the presentation. Um, could, could you again just walk through the, the site drainage? Cause I'm, I'm thinking about the nature of this site. That has this condition. You're built up above that, but talking about pervious materials in the parking area and drainage through that. How, how does that work?
So let's be clear that the site is clean. Uh, it hasn't, it has a restriction on it because that's what local does. And they don't want, we had to get the residential restriction lifted, which was a big deal.
Okay.
Um, but there's a restriction not to do a basement because they don't wanna ever have an issue.
No occupied space.
Right. So it's not dirty.
But it's not cat.
Uh, no, it's not cat.
So you can allow drainage down into that. So that answers that.
Yep.
Just in terms of the presentation. Um, the, the, the question about the height of the wall and, and the appearance of the building, both in terms of the overall High Street elevation and the overall State Street. I think, you know, when I look at your, your architectural building elevations, they sort of started at, you know, at that upper elevation and, and that showed the building. I think it would be very helpful to do drawings that show those elevations in the real overall site context. So you see that transition down to street level grade. And, and although it's probably an enormous amount of work, I would love to see a street wall elevation that put this building in context with at least a couple of the adjacent residential building, just so you could kind of see that. That, that's a lot of work, but I think there, there may be questions as you go forward about, you know, what this really feels like in terms of the overall.
Yeah, I think at the given point, we can clean some of it up in, in a way, um, that is why we included that gap from Hugh at the last sort of hint, because that's trying to do. Or I think, you know, with our, my thoughts.
It would be good to see the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
The chair of the window.
But, you know, that's, we're really, the planning board is really, is worse. You know, in restaurant, restaurant situation, we're working in the downtown, hopefully this. You know, places like this. Okay, well, that's, that's the end of our.
That's really, really helpful. We really appreciate it. Um, and we'll take that back and probably revise the presentation materials. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. It's not a public hearing, if you wanted to say something.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I understand it's not a public hearing. It has been suggested to me, you know, I report that you do have the discretion and you wanted to hear, but I understand you have powers.
You have a brief comment, that would be.
Stephanie, any attention, nineteen three High Street. Uh, because the planning board asked not to be the S B G A, um, for this development. I think that my husband and I and many of the others were confused about why this was happening and should we be here? And I did point out to everybody that it is not a public. Um, so what we're doing is preparing written comment and other materials for the Z B A. Some of the materials we're preparing are, um, three D modeling of, uh, the buildings. Uh, in the context of other buildings in the neighborhoods. Just to prove that it's about. So I completely agree with Attorney Me. This development is extremely, uh, high profile and important to this entire city. And it's important that it. So some of them, um, some of my concerns, um, are with the major grade changes and drainage. Um, and as, um, Attorney Me pointed out, they will be getting a peer review. Um, the, the plans do kind of push the envelope on some of the dimensional calls. Um, so it's important, I think, especially since we've had experiences in Newbury. The dimensions on plans are not exact, but the dimensions, that something is built are, that, um, that there, there be some kind of confirmation of what, what the dimensions of the plans are, including relative room size. Um, my husband, who has been working, who's the person who's been working on three D modeling for months now with each iteration of the plan, um, thinks there are some, you know, that there are some differences between what plans are and what is really happening. So it's just a, a peer confirmation of what those plans are showing. Um, the hardscaping, um, it's, it's there are extensive retaining and decorative, all of that walls, without any engineering. Would be particularly, particularly of concern to us, um, for the functional retaining. Should be some sort of plans which tell you what the, you know, how they're going to be installed, what the composition is, whatever it is that engineers like to see when you have functioning containments. Um, the landscaping, um, we think that it is aggressive on the High Street side. Landscaping and the hardscaping, aggressive on our side. The, the boundary to our front. Um, so it is not fully defined yet, landscaping part. Um, if we think it will raise maintenance issues. And, um, so we have some concerns about this, which we are and have been still, like I said yesterday, in touch with the, uh, development. So those are we are very much, we will be much more extensive with this special permit grant.
Thank you. Will we move on to the next? She is, um, Observer International Czar, the president of the Royal.
It's, um, Mr. Chair, this need meets on across thirty Green Street, same person that I was. They can. Uh, and we, this evening is Jonathan Miller, who's one of the managers on the project. Up here on behalf of the Resort Special Park, the C, and, um, we are looking for our, uh, the release of the seventy two thousand dollar bond. That the city has been holding for a, a little while. Um, last year, the project received its certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission. Um, we had submitted a, an ASB plan in the fall and then needed to get some more data. A lot of things got in the way, not the data, but work. Um, and so we submitted a new ASB plan, uh, that responded to some of the comments that the peer review engineer had had. He had some other comments that we have since also addressed. Um, and I believe now as a result, the ASB plan meets the peer review requirement, uh, engineers requirements. And importantly, the planning board rules and regulation requirements. Um, and we'd like the board to vote to release the bonds. I look around this table, I don't know that anybody except for maybe Alden was on this project. Are you here, Dr.?
I, I seconded the motion to approve it.
There you go. I wasn't on my project deliberately, so forgive my.
I didn't know that until I was looking back at the decisions.
You didn't see my name. Anyway, so, um, we're looking to release the bond, um, now that it's, uh, ready to go.
The Well, just, just a question second, cause I know there were, there were some concerns and just the feedback from Andy is, do you agree that those things have been met?
All of those we received on the email actually late today.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, and I actually just saw it before I gave it to the meeting, so, um, he had indicated to us and I didn't, we didn't even have a chance to go further than it, so. Um, we missed.
So let me, while Andy's pulling that up, so I replied to Andy, but I took all of you off because you shouldn't have been on. Um, for other reasons, and I left. Just so you know, I you know, so.
So these are prescriptions and it's the, this email lately and I just see him here, so. We didn't have a chance to distribute it to anybody. He had noticed a couple of other comments in here. Yeah, and he says he doesn't recommend. I for, you know, we by biggest concerns, be like, listen myself, my biggest concern is where then we have a statement from the applicant indicating that they were still properly, we have that here. Um, from the recent letter receiving.
Pardon me?
The letter just indicating that things have been built accordingly.
That's right, from the contractor, that's correct.
Um, and then the other thing was just any, um, detail on the ASB plan is a concern. Here. So each of make sure we get a version of the ASB plan and the state of the market as of three D and reference, one of our projects includes, uh, the rest of the field.
So I, and I, after I saw this email from Phil, I came up with my own list. I think there are a number of things in the ASB plan that are missing and some things are just wrong. And so I, I really wanted to sit down with engineering and hopefully with Phil, um, to just figure out, you know, where things are. One of the, there's, there's a bunch of things with Lot Ten, there's lot lines existing on three sides of Lot Ten. Sewer force name is shown on the proof plan is not shown on the ASB. Um, there's a utility hole showing in the middle of the house, which probably isn't there. Um, there were some, some sewer services issues. I got some easement questions. Um, in terms of utility easements, so I think we just, there's just a bunch of stuff that it's not there.
But, so I'd like, I mean, I'd like to know that. Our engineer has, you know, has gone back and forth with Phil many times. And so, you know, he double checked everything after Phil said it. So I'd really like to know your written comments.
Yeah, so Phil and Phil has his written comments too, so.
But I did, right, I've seen Phil's comments. So I, I would like to address the gas main issue though, if I could. So your regulations require us to put on your plans municipal services. That's what it says. That's what we put on this plan, municipal utilities, right? And I might add that with all due respect to Phil, and I've worked with Phil for twenty years. He approves and you approve the Port Place subdivision plan that's evergreen, we want to bring. And it doesn't show the gas facilities. Right? It shows water and sewer and storm drain. That's what it shows. Because that's what you require as well. So the fact that he now all of a sudden wants us to put the gas mains on, which by the way, we didn't construct. Right? Is, it's not part of your regulation. So I'm happy to address your other issues, um, written, which I'm not familiar with. But, um, the, the gas main stuff is silly for us to go back and forth on because it's not part of your regulations and it's not been required. Even by, Phil did the review of Port Place, right?
But, but there are some things that.
And that's fine. I'd like to have the list so we can give it to our engineer to make sure that they have addressed it because they, he's gone back and forth with Phil, so I'd like to know that.
And we, and I think we need to have a instead of having, doing it back and forth, you know, it's, we need to do, you sit down and talk about this.
Yeah.
And maybe I can get Matt in that meeting, right?
I was thinking it would probably be good for two to just, at least one person, uh, from all experiences, just make sure that there's no ambiguity or business made about it and we can all be done with one, you know. Um, so, um, what could you ask to pull ahead and?
I, I think John Eric should come in because, you know, this was all constructed in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, right? So there was all there was a lot of stuff happening in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But it's all been inspected by the city. I mean, it has all been inspected. So I'm happy, I think you're right, Rip, obviously, if there's a utility pool that, you know, we missed in the middle of a house, then just long there. Um, so i- if we could, we could get Matt in on that conversation because I think that's the most efficient way. Our engineer, yeah.
If he, he didn't actually certify the the, the completion, it was the contract.
Right, Matt didn't oversee that. He wasn't out there seeing the, right, right? So he couldn't make that certification, right?
Assuming you might be able to make yourself.
Yeah, and I think, I think it would be great to, to the best thing would be to have a letter, a letter from some, whether it's from you. It is everybody's comments, it's all it is.
Yeah, quite right. I agree with that notion one hundred percent. But it is what I thought it would provide here. So we have this sort of, you know, more recent feedback from Phil, having seen those. Um, we have it. We just ended, uh, I have not heard back in public services, they have anything else they want to add to this or. And I agree with what I'm saying. Very small, very poor legislative.
And, and hopefully it would be a letter from somebody here, whether it's, again, whether it's you or whether it's Phil to the applicant.
I'm happy to. And I would like to say, you know, these are the things that would like that plan of bigger, you know, and sort of and I know some provides and the draft, and the revised, they all didn't come back, that address concerns. Um, I don't know whether or not Bill or Wayne would have anything else to add or discuss about the plan. Um, so we do know we were most recently this afternoon, Phil, and yeah.
So, so we can, we can set up a meeting. And I guess, and then, then we can turn it around with the.
If you're able to suggest a.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to be a part of that meeting, but I'll get Matt.
Yeah, whatever, if he wants to. Just let us know, he's the whole, I, I mean, if you like, if you guys want to immediately, I would, uh, copy Wayne and Eric, that's speed up, let's start.
I don't know, I've been talking to John Eric on everything I've heard about from him, yes.
Well, yeah, so, and that's why I say wait. Uh, so we.
Yeah. So we'll wait on there.
And I would, I, I just guess also, we, we, we just, we just make everything say, we're.
Yeah. We want the plan to be right, right? We're just trying to get you what you need, but I'm not going to put stuff on there that I'm not required to put on there either, so, and guess.
Um, yeah, I don't personally, if you have like, I don't have a strong proposition. Easier in person for a lot of these reasons, um, but if for some reason it's something independent person, we guess for that. Easier if we get all the.
Yeah, I think if you're all around the table, that's really what should happen. Yeah. So we won't continue this to the next meeting because by the time, if you meet next week, even I think the changes will be, we don't need to continue in any way, it's not a hearing, so we'll just get back on the agenda. Okay, all right, thank you. Was there anything else? Did anybody have any other concerns besides your list?
And I, and I was just, I find this frankly is seeing, seeing Phil start with the plan just as much as I could.
Yeah. That's fine.
And I knew so. At the beginning, so I would push that over you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I, I'm assuming that's, uh, what we have, because you saw prior comment. So that's what we have, that is just a question of the, uh, from, we mentioned Phil's email here today. What else we may have a very late proposal?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
You're done? Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the notes of the major team meeting. Uh, I made some yeah. Uh, anyway, every, I don't know. Would accept the motion to approve this?
To approve the five fifteen meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Not all those in favor? Any vote of you, you're, you're. So for, for the. And, uh, next item on the agenda is discussion of the M B T A computer in some.
Yeah, no. To further dialogue or investigation. So the, the council is meeting. He hasn't made any, those are just. Um, something I'd like to provide.
The committee.
Sorry. So you're supposed to be there, was that what you're suggesting? Uh, no, you don't need to be there. But, but it's always something. On the ten, we have our hearing for the zoning change that is the case. So that is a hearing, and it's unusual because it would be here, but it would be back, it's a call, it was used in a year ago. Uh, in the government chamber, we just, you got there, um, so that's what we lost. That, yes, it's, uh, long as you're. Yeah. Uh, so six P M, it would certainly not go any longer than seven because that's the council circuit and regular. And I, I don't personally do this, but really this problem. You know, that point, but, uh, I think we done short about that, but it's just a question. Also.
And can you, um, send a reminder to everybody?
Yeah, do you think everybody?
Monday, six.
Sorry.
Monday, six.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, and it's very all. This is all, you know, we're getting. Again, right, so we need to, we would normally also like at the end of the day, it might be a, you know. People are just, I just, what, not a big deal. All right.
We need at least four people.
Yeah. Oh, is that right? Yeah, that's, it's important to be, you're, technically, it's a hearing, it's something about that, like, you're having some point here, so. That's it, first.
And as you've mentioned, you're canceling the nineteenth meeting.
The end of nineteen, by June.
I mean, I'm enjoying it. We, after next week, we get together in July seventeen.
Which does give you plenty of time to ramp. Think about the forty yard district guidelines or anything else, like if it's clean or like, or, you know. Changes, changes made to the design standards, for instance, that doesn't even, although here, right, we're specifically in this side, we're liking the forty yard, it should also align. Bring your ideas to that, let's see if we have your ideas, and then either we can incorporate the new zone angle. So, um, you know, just. So, yeah, but, um, but you know, bring your thoughts, what you like, what you don't like. Some of this. Or even think about it. Bring it up with that, and get your thoughts on what should be added or changed due to that. Not really generally designed. Change because we've already got the design. Um, so what we could have made, we said that, be problematic because setbacks were tight up, we like, or changing, couldn't act, you know, that's reducing it would then push us forward. We're right now a client of you. You know. Uh, we did know the account. We wanted to make sure, uh, as the yeah, we put it, uh, the back of the front page. So we noted that. I understand that. Think about what you make sure you include it and bring your ideas.
So the mayor mentioned today that
Yeah.
That we're giving serious consideration to ramping up zoning change for the E Mart. Two hundred and twenty units. Do you have?
So, um, for putting about the twenty J days, we're entirely moving over, with news or, right? The double goal for plus eight, he's interested in me something probably faster than at least he believes the zoning process next year dialogue. So that kind of visioning, you know, that's and so it's. So, um, they, they will. Or with the. Sometimes. Or so I don't know whether they are making a difference. That, so there's a, um, people may have different stuff. Be, it may be a smaller zoning change than, than only speaking, you know, what we do. Is there a council or council, what, smaller something sooner than a, you know, wholesale, uh, in the area? Um, and if that's the case, did, you know, do we all have a couple of that's consistent? Vision would be. Uh, I have no problem with a small piece being done sooner, given I recognize zoning changes can take a while with bigger changes, um, but I definitely make sure.
And, and, you know, frankly, the there's a, could be a disconnect between what we, uh, type of general. Right now, S S District, which is transportation, it's forty minutes, maybe. And I feel like, I mean, it's a, it's a big difference, and it's gonna be something.
Yeah, I major issue is major issue, but but just from a zoning perspective, the one thing that immediately like, maybe you wish in the back, even just major way to be able to one boss away, maybe that's our most. Here, the question is to, to, to somebody that's an acre. You have the intention in, in reducing the amount of possible oil in the truck. With the rest of this, you know, that part of the, in very. Um, but in some way, before, I, and I don't know how, you know, if the council will be, never mind us. Will the council be in a position to say, you know, we're holding about seventy years an acre, you know, and so you open that one spot, does that apply to the rest of the district? Isn't it one of, you know? But it's, it's a high number, I think, only because I've seen the dialogue about. Um, and I realize it's not the district or the city, but, you know, the capital will look at what a pretty vast space to Harrison, and, and I'm not sure whether we will do, go up to somebody a acre. And if there's a way to get any point of point B, and I didn't have any particular issue with what, see, you know, we're sitting in front of it. Again, that's, you know, usually, I think the big ones, there's always back.
The other, the other thing is there is a move to move to change the zoning that part of maybe somebody's interested in going in, in part three. You know, why are we treating this one development? So that, that, then you start looking at that, you say, maybe we should be nice to find an area, which is, it's a factor. Story of the research.
Oh, and that mentioned, so we're, we shouldn't having Friday, the organization of all students that did, they did like, first, really, first, really, you once they put together, some of it's on the annuals and. So it's just, but right, maybe to show I think that they picked up all the images and sort of it's a back of the, like, you know, it's, it's progressive because using their, you know, gas, you know, like, but it does kind of cap it well, but, but it's funny.
So I hate to ask this question, but, uh, what is, what's timeline for the consulting?
So we're definitely.
We're almost, we're almost in summer.
Yeah. Um, and it's gonna be some ground where this happening merge with the consultant and with us uh on the planning board end. Um, and with the zoning advisory group board and full. He in all. I get it. So I don't know whether it will be sooner, you know.
As far as you're aware, the pros. Beginning the study of. Probably not a good time for somebody to come in. Two thirds. Anything else? Um, well, I just want to let everybody know that. Jeff thought he was going to resign from the board um effective August first. She'll be here. But our meeting next Sunday, I believe, also September. So we are going to be. Down with person and contact, I'll contact Brian and Jenny with. Decide what they want with the mansion to be. She's going to, I don't know the. She has not yet. Today, when she was emailing me, she said. Should we still stay with one of these first? Okay.
Move to adjourn?